Good evening. Welcome to the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services Public Hearing to receive testimony regarding Saint Gobain Performance Plastics Corporation's petition for a variance. We are using the GoToWebinar platform to conduct this online hearing. You'll notice that DES staff are wearing masks and spread apart. That is because we have a number of staff in this room. My name is Todd Moore, and I work for the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services. I will be your host for this online hearing. You will hear from me periodically throughout the hearing as I provide instructions on how you can participate, such as how to ask clarifying questions or provide oral testimony. We will turn on and describe certain webinar functions during the times of the hearing when we are soliciting questions or testimony. Please note that all attendees are muted by us and have no video feed. You do not need to mute yourselves. You will be able to see and hear DES staff, but neither we nor any other attendees can hear or see you through this online platform. The exception to this will be the times during the hearing when individual attendees are unmuted by us so that they can ask clarifying questions or provide oral testimony. When attendees request to speak, we will call you one at a time and unmute you so that we and all other attendees can hear you. Please note that even when you are unmuted and speaking with us, your video feed will not be transmitted to us or any other attendees. We and the attendees will be able to hear you but not see you. I will provide more detailed instructions on how to request to speak at the points during the hearing where we open the floor for you to ask clarifying questions or provide oral testimony. In addition to the instructions I will provide throughout the hearing, we also have Meg King of New Hampshire DES standing by to help if you need personal assistance. I will read her phone number and email address now, and we will also post it on the screen intermittently throughout the hearing. You can reach Meg by phone at (603) 271-6893, or by email at margaret.king@des.nh.gov. That's a brief summary of how you will be able to participate in this hearing. Don't worry if you didn't catch it all. You will be hearing from me again later when I provide detailed instructions. I thank you for joining us and look forward to helping you participate in this online hearing. I am now going to turn you over to our hearing officer, Mike Fitzgerald, who will get us started. Right?
Good evening. Thank you, Todd. For the record, it is shortly after 6:00 PM on August 5th, 2020. We are at the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services offices at 29 Hazen Drive in Concord, New Hampshire, for a public hearing on a variance request for Saint Gobain Performance Plastics located in Merrimack, New Hampshire. Saint Gobain Performance Plastics has requested a variance of the February 11th, 2021 deadline to complete construction and installation of a regenerative thermal oxidizer. This deadline was set pursuant to RSA 125-C:10-E and the terms of temporary permit number TP 0256 issued by the Department of Environmental Services Air Resources Division on February 11th, 2020. Saint Gobain Performance Plastics has requested the variance be granted until February 11th, 2022, or one year from the date of a final non-appellable order disposing of the town of Merrimack's appeal of the permit to the New Hampshire Air Resources Council, Council Appeal Docket Number 20-05ARC, whichever is earlier. My name is Michael Fitzgerald. I'm the Assistant Director of the Air Resources Division of the Department of Environmental Services, and I have been appointed by Craig Wright, the Director of the Air Resources Division, to serve as the hearing officer for today's public hearing. Also here with me tonight, representing DES, are Craig Wright, Director of the Air Resources Division. Director Wright will be responsible for any ultimate decision on this variance request and will not be participating. He's here to listen. Catherine Bean, Administrator of the SIP Planning Bureau in the Air Resources Division; Gary Millberry, Administrator of the Permitting and Environmental Health Bureau; Todd Moore, whom you've heard of previously, Air Permit Programs Manager; Meg King, State Air Permit Engineer; and Alyssa Booty, our Program Assistant. As the hearing officer, I find that due to the state of emergency declared by the Governor as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic, and in accordance with Governor's Emergency Order Number 12 pursuant to the Executive Order 2020-04, DES is authorized to conduct this Please note, there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Order. However, in accordance with the emergency order, I am confirming that we are providing public access to the hearing by telephone with additional access by GoToWebinar for this electronic hearing. All participating DES staff have the ability to communicate contemporaneously during this meeting through this platform, and the public has access to contemporaneously listen and, if necessary, participate in this meeting. The meeting link is posted on the DES website under the "What's New?" section of our homepage, As outlined on the DES webpage containing information on tonight's hearing, in order to ask questions or provide oral testimony, you will need to join the webinar from a computer or an iOS, Android, or Windows phone mobile device. While the GoToWebinar platform that DES will be using for this hearing provides capability for attendees to listen in by calling a phone number provided in the registration confirmation, those who join that way will only be able to listen. Phone audio-only attendees will not be able to ask questions or provide oral testimony. There will be other opportunities to provide testimony described later. If anybody experiences a problem with access, again, please call Meg King at (603) 271-6893, or email her at margaret, M-A-R-G-A-R-T, dot king, at des.nh.gov. This hearing will be conducted in accordance with the New Hampshire Code of Administrative Rules, EMV-A200 and EMV-C200. As required by these rules, an audio record of this hearing is being recorded. Also, this hearing is being recorded on the GoToWebinar platform and will be posted later this week on the DES website. All who speak will be required to state for the record their name, title, and the name of the party they represented this hearing. The purpose of this hearing is to receive public comments specific to the variance request. Notice of this hearing was published in Union Leader on June 15th, 2020, and in the Merrimack Journal on June 11th, 2020, June 21st, 2020. The public notice indicated that DES would accept comments on the variance request until 4:00 PM today, Wednesday, August 5th, 2020. However, we recognize that electronic hearing format is relatively new and may be challenging for some, and that technical issues could be encountered during the hearing. For this reason, in accordance with DES Rules EMV-C205.08, closing the hearing and the record, we will keep the record open for written comments for one more week to 4:00 PM on Wednesday, August 12th, 2020. The process for this hearing will be as follows. First, Catherine Bean will provide a brief overview of the variance request and the criteria under which DES will evaluate this request. If you're participating via GoToWebinar, slides will accompany Ms. Bean's overview. Once Ms. Bean has finished, we will see if anyone has any clarifying questions on the variance process. This is only to ask clarifying questions, not to provide testimony at this point. Please note, DES will not be providing responses to questions regarding the merits of the variance request. Tonight's hearing is intended to receive your comments. We will then proceed to the public testimony portion of the hearing. Todd Moore will first provide a brief overview of how to provide oral testimony via GoToWebinar. We will then start to call on those wishing to testify in the interest of time. Please note that those who have already submitted written comments to DES do not need to also read them into the record at tonight's hearing. We will call each speaker as well as the person on deck. Due to the number of participants, please be prepared to provide your testimony when you are on deck. Each person will be limited to five minutes to speak. After five minutes, we will give you a friendly reminder. As I mentioned before, questions on this variance process will be addressed by DES to the extent possible. However, the purpose of this hearing is to solicit and receive your comments on the variance request. We will address those comments in our final decision. I remind you to keep limiting your remarks to five minutes and to keep them germane to the variance request itself. If there are any questions about how we're going to proceed, Todd can briefly go over how to do so. Otherwise, we'll proceed with Ms. Bean's presentation. If you need to ask a question at this point, use the raise a hand function.
This is Todd Moore again, and I'm here to provide instructions on how you can ask us clarifying questions. We have enabled the GoToWebinar Raise Hand function. Anyone who wishes to ask a question can let us know by clicking the hand symbol to raise their hand. I will provide additional instruction on how to do that on the next slide. We will be able to see which attendees have raised their hand. I will call on you one by one and unmute you so you can ask your question. Please note that the name I announce is the name under which you registered for the GoToWebinar. If we have a list of people waiting, I will also announce the names of the next two people on deck so they can get ready to ask their question. When I turn the floor over to you to ask your question, I will unmute you, and then DES and all attendees will be able to hear you. Please note that we will unmute you in the GoToWebinar platform. Please also make sure that you have not muted yourself. We ask that everyone who speaks during this hearing start by stating their name, address, and who they represent. We have enabled the Raise Hand function of GoToWebinar. You should see a green hand symbol in the GoToWebinar slide dock. If you want to ask a question, please let us know by clicking that hand symbol. It will turn red if you click it. If it is red, your hand is raised, and we will know that you want to ask a question. Again, we will call on you one at a time to ask your question. Once you've done so, we will lower your hand. Please note that if you change your mind and do not want to ask a question, you can click the symbol yourself to lower your hand. It will revert back to green, indicating that your hand is not raised.
Are we receiving questions?
And we'll give people a few moments to use the function.
At this point, if you have any questions, follow the instructions that Todd just gave Do we have any questions, Todd?
We do. I'm just sorting through.
Again, this is not for testimony at this point, only if you have questions about the procedure.
So right now, it looks like we have two people who would like to ask a question. We will first hear from Cheryl Anne Pierce and then Nancy Murphy.
Cheryl Anne Pierce, go ahead.
Yeah. I'll...
Go ahead, Cheryl Anne. We can hear you.
You can hear me. Can I only ask one question at a time?
Could you please start by stating your name, address, and who you represent?
Absolutely. My name is Cheryl Anne Pierce. I live at 23 Mayflower Drive in London Dairy. I live within the GMZ. My question is, can I ask more than one question?
If your questions are regarding the procedure for conducting the seminar, the webinar right now, go ahead and ask all your questions. If they're relative to the hearing subject, there'll be a later time for testimony and questions.
Okay. I just wanted to call attention to the fact that at 6:02, we had no sound, and at 6:14, we had no sound for approximately up to one minute. So the first time that you gave Margaret King's information was generally not clear. So it's good that you repeated that. I appreciate that. That's the only question I have about the webinar. I seem to understand how to raise my hand.
All right. Well, we're glad you were able to do so, and thank you for that question. Do we have anyone else, Todd?
Yes, thank you for that. And it appears that the other person who had raised their hand has unraised it. So we have no further questions at this time.
Okay. So if there are no further questions about how we're going to proceed, we will go ahead and proceed with Kathy Bean's presentation on the variance request.
Thank you, Mike. Good evening. As Mike said, my name is Kathy Bean, and I am an Administrator here at the Department of Environmental Services Air Resources Division. For those of you who don't know me, I've been the Technical Lead regarding the air emissions portion of the PFAS investigation surrounding Saint Gobain Performance Plastics since the water contamination was detected in 2016. I've been to Merrimack on several occasions to take samples of materials. I was involved with the 2018 STACK test conducted at the facility, and I was the Lead Engineer on the air permit that was issued this past February. However, the purpose of tonight's virtual public hearing is not to review and discuss those aspects of the air-related issues. Instead, the department is asking the public to provide testimony specifically on the variance requests. So in order to do so effectively, I'd like to briefly explain the regulatory framework that applies to variance requests and the requirements that the department must follow when making a final decision. I'd also like to acknowledge that I've received many emails regarding the variance over the course of the public comment period, and I've attempted to reply to everyone that submitted their comments via email so that you have confirmation that the information was received and has been entered into the record for the department to consider regarding the variance. But just so everyone is on the same page, I want to briefly touch on where the department's authority and guiding requirements are on the topic of variances. While there are many different statutes in the New Hampshire regulations that the department relies on when going about our daily responsibilities, the majority of those that apply to air pollution are found in Chapter 125(c) Air Pollution Control. That is where the Commissioner's duties are assigned related to air pollution. That's where our ability is to issue permits, write rules, enforce those rules, and it's even the location where the requirement to install best available control technology for PFAS emissions from Saint Gobain are located. Within that chapter, there is a Section 125(c)(16) for variances, and in that section, it lays out the legislatively mandated conditions under which the Commissioner may issue a variance. Accompanying those statutory requirements are the procedural rules, which are contained in EMBA 200. Here, step-by-step requirements that the department must follow in order to notify the public of a variance, conduct a public hearing, and issue a decision are located. Again, this is where the parameters are set for what the department shall base the final decision on regarding the variance. So I just want everyone to be clear that the department has requirements that they must follow every step of the way in this process. Tonight's public hearing is just one of those steps. So as I said, there is a prescribed sequence of events that takes place regarding variance petitions as outlined in the rules. I'm not going to read through this slide, but basically, we started with Saint Gobain submitting a variance petition back on June 4th of 2020, and we are conducting the virtual public hearing this evening. So this is the sequence of events that have taken place thus far. So the various petition that Saint Gobain submitted on June 4th, 2020, requested an extension of the deadline for the installation and operation of the control device, the regenerative thermal oxidizer, or RTO. According to Saint Gobain, the basis of the request is twofold. First, that the town of Merrimack's appeal of the air permit creates uncertainty in the final design of the RTO, and may potentially require the addition of a scrubber to deal with hydrogen fluoride emissions. Second, that the COVID-19 pandemic creates issues with supply chain and construction timelines. So Saint Gobain is asking for a one-year extension either from the existing deadline or from the conclusion of the appeal process, whichever is later, early. Just a quick note that the town of Merrimack's appeal is a separate issue to be addressed at a later date, so it would be inappropriate for the department to get into the issues surrounding the appeal tonight. In addition, the appeal of the air permit is under the jurisdiction of the Air Resources Council. If you're interested in reading correspondence related to the variance petition, you can find it at the department's one-stop data and information website, and I've included the facility ID and application number to assist you with finding that on our website.
Kathy, do you read those for those who are not?
Sure. So the facility ID is 3301100165, and the application number for the variance information is 20-0145.
Thank you.
So after the department received and reviewed the variance petition, the department determined that additional information was needed for clarification purposes. Specifically, the department requested Saint Gobain submit the information regarding four issues that might affect their ability to meet the regulatory deadline. First, the department requested the RTO vendor submit a proposed schedule once a purchase agreement is issued by Saint Gobain. Second, the department asked what modifications had been made to date, what remaining work needed to be done, and an updated schedule for the contractors involved in the modifications at the facility. Third, the department asked for documentation from each vendor and subcontractor who had informed Saint Gobain that they would have potential delays due to COVID-19. And fourth, the department asked for further detailed description of the proposed control device that Saint Gobain has chosen. So when reviewing any variance petition, there are four regulatory requirements that the department must evaluate. In order to grant the variance, the department must determine that the petitioner has taken reasonable steps to eliminate or prevent air pollution. The granting of variance would not create a danger to public health, welfare, or safety. The source of air pollution has social and economic value to the area in which it is located, and enforcement of the requirement for which the variance is sought would produce serious economic hardship on the petitioner without equal or greater benefits to the public. So these are the four areas that the department will be looking at the variance petition. With that, I will turn it back over to Mike Fitzgerald.
Thank you very much, Kathy. Now, if there are any questions on the slides, again, Todd will moderate the incoming questions. So we'll go to Todd Moore, who'll give a brief overview again on how to provide, how to raise your hand and give questions.
Thank you, Mike. Again, we will be using the Raise Hand function. So if you click the hand symbol, that will let us know that you would like to ask a And right now, we do not have anybody requesting to ask a question.
Again, these are just questions regarding the regulatory information that Kathy just provided, clarifying questions. So give it another minute or so.
As while we're waiting, I can repeat the instructions for anybody who may have missed them the first time. Again, we are using the Raise Hand function of GoToWebinar. Anyone who wishes to ask a question can let us know by clicking the hand symbol to raise their hand. The hand symbol is a green symbol. If you click it, it will turn red, which would mean that your hand is raised, and you would like to ask a question. Well, we still do not have any raised hands, so it appears that nobody has any questions, Mike.
Good. Thank you very much. Again, now we'll go to Todd, who'll give a brief overview on how to provide testimony.
So at this time, I'm going to provide instructions on how to provide oral testimony. We're going to use a different GoToWebinar function for this. We are enabling the GoToWebinar Question function. You can let us know if you want to provide oral testimony by typing and submitting a question through GoToWebinar. I will provide additional instruction on how to use this question function on the next slide. Note that the typed question is not your testimony, and you do not need to type any substantive content in your question. We are just using this function to identify who would like to be called upon to provide oral testimony. To assist us in tracking testimony, please enter your question as your name, address, and who you represent. Don't worry if you mistype or submit a question without this information. We will know that you want to speak just by the fact that you submitted a question, and we will ask you to start your testimony by stating your name, address, and who you represent. We traditionally attempt to provide state senators and representatives the opportunity to speak first, and we would like to do so during this hearing. If you are a senator or representative and would like to be called upon early in the queue, please start your question with the word senator or representative. We will attempt to pull these out and put them up front in the queue. We will use this same system of calling on people to provide oral testimony as we use for clarifying questions. I will identify the person who is about to speak, and I will also identify up to two people on deck so that they can prepare. We will continue to ask that everyone who speaks during this hearing start by stating their name, address, and who they represent. Okay. We have enabled the Question function of GoToWebinar. You should see a question box on the GoToWebinar platform. You should see a question box on the GoToWebinar slide doc. If you want to provide testimony, please let us know by typing your name, address, and who you represent in the question box, then hit Enter to submit. We will be able to see a list of all attendees who have signed up to provide testimony by submitting a question. We will call on you one of one at a time to provide your testimony. Please recall that Meg King of DES is available by phone or email if you need personal assistance with submitting a request to provide testimony by using the GoToWebinar question function. Meg can be reached by phone at 603-271-6893, or by email at margaret.king@des.nh.gov. Now I'm going to review question function. See who we have lined up for testimony.
Thank you, Todd. We're now going to call people to testify. And we're going to proceed in the following manner. Please, again, as Todd mentioned, indicate if you are a state senator or state representative. We will attempt, again, and I won't guarantee it, but we will attempt to try to identify those questions and proceed with calling on you first. We will then proceed to all other commenters.
By this time, we have two people signed up. We will leave this function open, and you can submit a question at any time while anyone is speaking to get in the queue for providing oral testimony. The people that we have lined up so far include Tom Koenig and Catherine Hodge. I will call on Tom Koenig first. Mr. Koenig, when I turn the floor over to you, please start by stating your name, address, and who you represent. Mr. Koenig, you have the floor.
Thank you very much. This is Tom Koenig. I'm the I live in One Danforth Road in Merrimack, New Hampshire. And I'm the chairman of the Merrimack Town Council. The town of Merrimack would like to thank the DES for scheduling a public hearing regarding St. Gobain's variance request. We prepared written comments which were submitted to DES on July 29th. The town of Merrimack Town Council felt that it was important to provide a public summary of the submitted comments. Therefore, statements made this evening will provide our view of the town council's thoughts. I'm going to skip through some of the preamble that you guys have covered several times this evening and go straight to the point. The SGPP delay request is founded on five false premises. One, that the public good is served by allowing SGPP to make millions by polluting the air, groundwater, and bodies of the town's citizens. The town is appalled by SGPP's assertion that the public has a greater interest in SGPP making millions of dollars by polluting the air, groundwater, and bodies of its citizens than it does installing the RTO and controlling pollution as required by law. Number two, the year is too tight a timeline for design and implementation of the RTO, which will capture and combust SGPP's VOCs to be compliant with the law. This timeline should not be a surprise to SGPP since it is required by RSA 125-C:10-E. In fact, the 12-month timeline is the maximum time available by law. SGPP is required to meet this timeline because of the threat SGPP air emissions pose to human health and the environment. Three, any changes to the temporary permit caused by the town's appeal of the limits on SGPP authorization to emit PFCs and hydrogen chloride will require SGPP to redesign the RTO from the ground up. SGPP provided no engineering details around why modifications could result from the town's appeal of its temporary permit and provides examples that are irrelevant. Neither is the combustion temperature or the residence time under question in the town's appeal. In addition, any increase in PFCs would not affect the overall mass or thermal loading to the RTO and would not therefore result in a design modification. Four, SGPP is properly authorized under the temporary permit to avoid implementation of best available control technology back so long as there is no violation of ambient air limits. SGPP delay request complains that, quote, "The pre-control rate of emissions for PFOS is already lower than the annual emissions limit set in the permit," end quote. SGPP seems to forget that NHDES concluded that SGPP emissions of PFCs, quote, "have caused and continue to contribute to an exceedance of ambient groundwater quality standards, AGQS, as a result of deposition of the PFCs and precursors to the air and as such are subject to the requirements of RSA-C:10-E," unquote. This connection between SGPP emissions of PFCs and groundwater contamination means that SGPP is required to apply back for best available control technology. In addition, House Bill 1264 was passed by the New Hampshire Legislature and was signed into law by the governor in July 2020. The bill set the maximum contaminant levels, MCLs, and AGQS for the following four PFAS: 12 parts per trillion for PFWA, 15 parts per trillion for PFOS, 18 parts per trillion for PFHXS, and 11 parts per trillion for PFNA. These MCLs were previously determined by NHDES to be protective of human health and were presented in the draft temporary air permit. And five, SGPP can't undertake construction during the coronavirus pandemic. SGPP asserted that the coronavirus is another cause for delay. SGPP fails to acknowledge that the New Hampshire Division of Public Health Services, Bureau of Infectious Diseases, recommends the user, the use of face coverings and masks when social distancing is not possible. The use of face covering slash mask, which was not mentioned at all in the SGPP delay request, could allow construction to proceed at a normal pace, much like other construction projects in the state. The town council has also reviewed the requirements identified in New Hampshire Code of Administrative Rules, ENB-A200, procedural rules, and ENB-A202.07B, decisions for variances. The purpose of the rules is to establish uniform procedures for the public, notice process, and the evaluation of information provided during a hearing. ENB-A202.07B specifically states that NHDES will grant a variance if four conditions have been met. Based on Merrimack Town Council's review, SGPP has not met the conditions identified in the rule. Number one, the petitioner has taken reasonable steps to eliminate or prevent air pollution. If SGPP was able to eliminate air pollution from their process operations, which has resulted in a contamination of Merrimack's drinking water, there would be no need for the RTO. Clearly, the efforts have not been sufficient. Two, granting a variance would not create a danger to public health, welfare, or safety. A variance would continue to endanger the public health, welfare, and safety. The reduced limits recently passed into law make it even more critical to stop the pollution that is emitted from SGPP stacks. Failure to do so would result in continuing to contaminate Merrimack's drinking water, groundwater, and soils. Any further delays cannot be tolerated. Three, the source of air pollution has social and economic value to the area in which it is located. As previously discussed, there is no social or economic value to allow SGPP's toxic pollution to continue to contaminate Merrimack's drinking water, our homes, and our bodies. The local water district is already spending over $20 million to install filtering systems for these chemicals. Any additional delays will only increase the cost burden to the town and its citizens to address the ongoing enormous impact of this pollution. And four, enforcement of the requirement for which the variance is sought would produce serious economic hardship on the petitioner without equal or greater benefits to the public. There's no doubt that cleaning up the pollution in the air, groundwater, and soil will benefit the community greatly. It never should have been allowed to accumulate in the first place. The contamination of groundwater was identified in February of 2016. February of 2021 would mean that SGPP has continued to be allowed.
Mr. Koenig? This is Mr. Koenig. You're well over our five-minute limit at this point as a result of your position with the as chair of the council on Michael, I'd continue, but I'd appreciate it if you could wrap up in another minute or so.
I have like two paragraphs left. Thank you.
Beautiful. That's fine. Thank you very much.
February 2021 would mean that SGPP has continued to be allowed to release these pollutants to the environment for five years. This is unacceptable. Delaying the installation of the RTO for another year would cause irreparable harm to the public in the form of further contamination by toxic, quote-unquote, "forever" chemicals. They are called, quote, "forever chemicals," unquote, because they do not break down in nature in hours, days, or weeks, but instead require many, many decades to break down. Merrimack residents already have levels of PFWA in their bloodstream way above the national average. Even one day, let alone one year of continued contamination to our environment does tremendous harm to the public and is unacceptable. Finally, the town believes that NHDES should deny the variance request and require SGPP to comply with the RTO design and construction conditions identified in temporary permit number TP-0256. Thank you very much for your attention and your willingness to let me complete.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Todd, our next questioner?
Thank you, Mr. Koenig. We're now muting you. And before we get to the next person, oh, first, I'll like to say we have a senator and a representative who identified they would like to speak. So next, we will be hearing from Senator Jeanie Deach. And based on my pronouncement of Mr. Koenig's name, I should issue one blanket apology now for the pronouncement of your names. But before we get to Senator Deach, I just want to note that we've had a couple of reports of people who have missed parts of the audio. We've checked things on our end, and they seem to be okay from our end. The best thing I can suggest is that if you are having problems with audio, log out of the webinar and log back in through the link provided in your registration. We know that some people are hearing just fine. So we will get back to testimony.
Todd, I would also note that, as we discussed, we are going to continue the hearing and allow an additional week for comments. So if you do miss information, this, the hearing, the webinar, video, and audio will be available later on the DES website. And you will have an additional week to provide us with comments. So if you're disrupted from hearing the proceedings tonight, please be aware that you'll have another opportunity.
Thank you, Mike. So now back to testimony. We will next hear from Senator Jeanie Deach. Behind that, we have Representative Wendy Thomas and then Catherine Hodge. Senator Deach, you now have the floor.
Hello?
Yes, Senator Deach. Go ahead.
Great. I am Chair of the Commission on Environmental and Health Impacts of Perfluorinated Chemicals. This is a legislative committee. We have heard extensive testimony regarding, as the name mentions, environmental and health impacts from...
Excuse me, Senator. Could you just identify your full name and your address, please?
Yes. I am Senator Jean Deach, 43 Pine Street in Peterborough, New Hampshire. I am the senator for District Nine, which includes Bedford of the affected towns. I am also Chair of the Commission on Environmental and Health Impacts of Perfluorinated Chemicals, which covers the impact from the St. Gobain factory. We have heard extensive testimony on these impacts, particularly in our health subcommittee. And this is recorded in notes which are available on our commission website. I would encourage anyone to read those extensively. I'm not going to try to go into them right now, but I can say that as a committee, which we include representatives from every affected town, as well as from Department of Environmental and the NHDES and Health and Human Services, and relevant activists from the community. And our top priority as a commission is to stop the ongoing pollution of groundwater and drinking water and soils surrounding St. Gobain site. So installing the RTO a year late, of course, will be counter to that priority and that mission. I can only say that installing the RTO will surely be a significant health impact on the community. And or not installing the RTO will be a significant health impact on the community. And installing the RTO will not be nearly as significant a hardship on St. Gobain as will the continued release of forever chemicals. And so I ask that you do not accept this variance. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Senator. We appreciate your comments. Todd, who's our next commenter?
Next, we will hear from Representative Wendy Thomas. And then on deck behind Ms. Thomas is Catherine Hodge. Ms. Thomas, when I give you the floor, please start by stating your name, address, and who you represent. Ms. Thomas, you have the floor.
Representative Thomas, can you hear us? Representative Thomas, we can't hear you with your mute. If you muted yourself, please take that off.
Ms. Thomas, we're going to keep you on the list, and we'll move on to calling other people for testimony, and we'll try you again. And if you're having technical difficulties, you can try contacting Meg King at 603-271-6893. So now we will move on and hear from Catherine Hodge. Ms. Hodge, when I give you the floor, please start by stating your name, address, and who you represent. Ms. Hodge, you have the floor.
Hi, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Okay. Good evening. This is my statement for the St. Gobain variance request for the temporary air permit TP-0256. I don't even know how to start this statement because it seems like we're always doing these meetings regarding...
Ms. Hodge, please?
Hi.
Hi. If you would start by giving us your full name, your address, and any entity you represent before you...
I'm sorry. I apologize. It's Catherine Hodge, 44 Belmont Drive, Merrimack, New Hampshire. I'm a resident of Merrimack. I do not even know how to start this statement because it seems like we're always doing these meetings regarding one particular company here in our town. The last time, in October of 2019, we had a meeting about this very issue, the air contamination caused by Satan Gobain, as I have taken to calling them. Once again, St. Gobain is making excuses for not helping our town with the contamination for which they are responsible. St. Gobain has and continues to emit PFAS and precursors into our air as per their own words in a pre- as per their own words in a previous SI report from April of 2019 by Goldr, where they state, quote, "PFAS-containing dispersions are still used at our facility," end quote. And also that, quote, "Air emission tests completed by Sancho Bane demonstrate that PFOA and other PFAS continue to be admitted through facility stacks," end quote. They have caused and continue to contribute to an exceedance of AGQS as a result of disposition of PFAS and their precursors. So no, Sancho Bane has not taken steps to ensure air quality for our town, nor do they seem concerned about our health and safety. In the Sancho Bane variance request, they state the town's appeal of said permit, quote, "Uncertainty on the RTO project," end quote. If Sancho Bane had done the right thing with an RTO system and then added scrubbers that were asked for to capture the HF, hydrogen fluoride, the correct testing to keep our air clean and agreed to testing before and after the RTO from the very beginning, our town would not have had to take this approach. So once again, the answer is no. They have not taken the health and welfare of our town into consideration, nor are they concerned about the safety of the air we breathe, our soil, or the water that we drink. The original permit, which was issued on February 20th of 2019 by DES and was a process spanning one and a half years, proves that Sancho Bane has had ample time to figure out and implement the proper RTO and added scrubbers that we asked for. Yet they continue to challenge every ask that is made and still spew over 190 different PFAS chemicals from their 13 air stacks, not only the two that they continually reference. They also have not accounted for Gen X, which turns into hydrogen fluoride. The dip pans have a Gen X reading of 1,500 ppb, which is why the scrubbers are needed to protect from the HF, which is a serious chemical byproduct of Gen X and which has significant health issues of its own. This is also why testing the air needs to be done before and after release from the stacks. Consideration almost also must be for the emissions and the potential for future emissions of all PFAS. Everything Sancho Bane is doing and has done completely goes against all things regarding fact. Fact refers to the maximum degree of reduction for each PFAS contaminant, not just the chemicals that Sancho Bane is cherry picking for their own convenience. Sancho Bane has also requested the variance due to the COVID-19 pandemic, but exactly how much of their operations in Merrimack or others were completely shut down? The answer is zero. If the answer is different, then they can prove it. They can prove to us that their operations were affected, but we all know that is not true since Merrimack operations continued poisoning us 24/7. Also, current guidelines for COVID release from the state of New Hampshire dispute their claims. Sancho Bane said that they have material delays, et cetera. Coming from China, it's no surprise. It utterly amazes me that many other worldwide companies have had little to no issues with this. The ATSDR has stated that PFAS exposure could equate to a much higher risk of COVID cases. As per this statement, it makes zero sense to extend their timeline due to the continued harm that they have caused and continue to cause. And they are once again jeopardizing the health and well-being of our town and residents. Just this past week, yet another disturbing health study was released in the Lancet regarding the effects of PFAS on the endocrine system, which is as increasingly harmful and getting as much attention as the immune suppression, adding to the plethora of health studies showing harm. It is yet another reason many states are setting such low MCL levels for drinking water. Given this and the vast accumulating science, there should be no excuse in delaying any PFAS exposures whatsoever, most especially to developing babies and children, particularly at crucial development times. There is no debate that air emissions caused our water pollution. And with the air results, we know our families are breathing it as well as still drinking it. To allow them any further delays is literally giving them permission to continue poisoning our families. Even worse, they know it. Dr. Linda Birnbaum, a leading toxicologist, scientist, and former director of the National Toxicology Program and the NIH, has stated, quote, "The NIH has studied approximately 200 PFAS chemicals and not one is safe," end quote. That means that zero are safe to us. Even our own NHDS has stated the direct impact of the air pollution from Sancho Bane is, in fact, the cause of our water contamination. Sancho Bane always makes everything about dollars. They have not even taken into consideration the amount of money our town has already spent and will be spending to ensure the protection of our residents, since they have not and continue to not do anything to protect us from harm and guarantee our safety in regards to PFAS. Sancho Bane, hi.
You're well over our five-minute limit at this point, so I'd ask you to try to wrap up in the next minute or so, please.
Okay, Kathy actually has my statement, so I'll just finish off one part that's specific. Sancho Bane continually says we have spent X amount of dollars in regards to PFAS. While that may be correct in some aspect, they have done nothing to prevent or slow the spread of PFAS to our residents. Dr. Birnbaum also said in Senate testimony, "You can't test your way out of this." Sancho Bane, stop pretending that you are a good concerned neighbor. Stop telling us you employ many Merrimack residents. So do a lot of other companies in town at greater numbers than you. Stop telling us you pay so much money in taxes, which are a pittance compared to others. Your actions of past and present tell us that you are, in fact, not a good neighbor or steward of our company. You came from Vermont and we all know why. Start proving what you say, we have waited long enough. Sancho Bane, hear us loud and clear, we are sick of the harm that you inflict 24/7, 365. We are sick of it and sick of you. Last thought. Imagine a multi-billion dollar worldwide company coming after a small town of 27,000 residents. In case our residents are not aware, Sancho Bane is suing our town on another matter, acting like a spoiled child who gets told, "No, you can't do that." But that is a matter for another day. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Todd?
Thank you, Ms. Hodge. And I believe Representative Wendy Thomas has joined us again, so we're going to hear from her next. And then behind Representative Thomas, we also have Representative Suzanne Vale. Behind that, we will have Lorraine Allen. So Representative Thomas, we're going to try this again, I'm going to turn it over to you. Please start by stating your name, address, and who you represent. You have the floor.
Representative Thomas, we still can't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Oh, my God. Okay, all right, I'm going to make this quick before anything else happens. Yeah, thank you very much for taking my testimony tonight. I am Representative Wendy Thomas, I live at 10 Wildcat Falls Road in Merrimack, New Hampshire, and I represent the town of Merrimack. As my official statement, I'm going to say that as a state representative for the heavily PFAS-infected town of Merrimack, I oppose any extension to the existing February 2021 deadline for Sancho Bane air permit compliance. Our town has suffered and continues to suffer health consequences because of PFAS contamination. Worrisome, reports are starting to come out linking chronic PFAS exposure to increased risk for COVID. Cleaning up PFAS has literally become a matter of life and death in our town. Merrimack has had enough. There is no reason that this multi-billion dollar company does not have the resources or the ingenuity to comply with the current and well-known air permit deadline, requiring that Sancho Bane filter their air emissions in Merrimack. Two other points that I'd like to make is that I want to remind you that we are in a pandemic and food is becoming an issue for many families. Lots of families in our town have started growing food in their local gardens. Every single time Sancho Bane burns without these air filters on, we get particulates in the air that go into the soil and that gets taken up by the produce that we're all growing in our gardens. We cannot get away from this stuff. We're trying to feed our families and we're giving them PFAS-infected food. The other point that I want to make is, should this delay be granted, I would certainly hope that the state of New Hampshire suspends a year's worth of the statute of limitations for any legal action that may be taken against Sancho Bane and push it out further. It's not fair for Sancho Bane to request a delay like this and have it impact families that are taking legal action against Sancho Bane. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Representative Thomas, we appreciate your testimony.
Yes, and I'm very happy we're able to hear it. Next, we will be hearing from Representative Susan Vale. Behind that, we have Lorraine Allen. And then we will have Wolfram Von Schon. Representative Vale, you have the floor. Please start by stating your name, address, and who you represent.
Representative Vale, we are having difficulty hearing you. Representative Vale, we cannot hear you, so we're going to go ahead, just as we did with Representative Thomas, and we'll come back to you.
Thank you. So next, we will be hearing from Lorraine Allen. And again, behind Lorraine, Lorraine Allen will be Wolfram Von Schon. Lorraine, when I give you the floor, please start by stating your name, address, and who you represent. Lorraine, you have the floor.
Hi, Lorraine Allen, 16 French Court, Merrimack, New Hampshire. I represent Merrimack Citizens for Clean Water. Merrimack Citizens for Clean Water submitted a written statement, which I'm not going to read. That is in Kathy's possession, I did receive confirmation. I'd like to thank you for this hearing. The voices of our residents are very, very important. The resident perspective and the community experience of anything like this is always significantly different than a corporation's perspective. What I have learned since March of 2016, when we began this journey, learning that our water sources were contaminated with PFAS chemicals, myself, my family, my neighbors, and residents of this town who've lived here for years have been exposed contaminated water that we've had to remediate at our own expense, and it was attributed to the air particulate. So in approaching this in the beginning with many, many others in this town who've been there together by each other's side since the beginning, we have done our own research, we have attended conferences, we have read, we have delved into the DES archives, we have learned to deal with one stop. We have just really read every report and every data table, and some people in town are totally sick of us. I realize that Sancho Bane is probably quite sick of us. So what I've learned over the last few years is from 2003 on record in the DES archives, as you know, there are issues from the very beginning of Sancho Bane taking over from ChemFab of issues with air. That's 17 years. We're four and a half years into this journey over water struggles. 17 years of struggles over air particulate. So in the beginning, you know, Teflon was referred to, I believe, as APFO or whatever the heck they called it then. The name changed somewhere on the line to PTFE. For those of you who don't know, who are listening, PTFE is Teflon. Teflon coating has changed in terms of changing molecular little bits, not to get too technical, but over the years, the manufacturers of PFOA, as we know, have voluntarily phased out because it was a huge problem. It was finally shown and acknowledged and proven to be harmful to human health with a massive health study of 70,000 people called the C8 Study. Definitive and absolutely horrific. So they phased it out, they phased it out because it was bad for them liability-wise. They didn't do this to be a good neighbor. So somewhere around 2009, Gen X was created by DuPont. Gen X is a substitute for PFOA. So PTFE, as we know, is covered by CPI, Confidential Business Information, a federal loophole which gives corporations more rights than citizens, who, as we know in this town, we've been powerless. DES has been very responsive and very generous with their time. I can't say enough good things about so many employees there, I thank you so much. Or senators, one of who spoke, Senator Shannon Shanley, absolutely concerned and on this. Many, many people have been there, you know, trying to help with the regulatory piece. But the long and short of it is corporations have more rights than citizens and more rights than communities. 17 years of struggles with air as we change the chemical formulation, which still is fabric coating with Teflon, all of the PFAS chemicals, every single one. I believe we have up to 4,700 of them identified at this point. We know there's 23 to 34 in the non-targeted analysis in our water, groundwater and surface water in Merrimack and surrounding communities. We know that there's 190 PFAS identified in the 2018 air stack testing, which Kathy had referred to. And we know that our regulatory process in this state, that immense work went into, covers only four of these, two of which are no longer in manufacturing. Current production stream, the confidential business information, the replacement chemicals, and some of them just tweak a molecule here and there, they are all documented as harmful. There are hundreds and thousands of health studies that I have read and others have read. And I will continue to present that information and educate our community because I am appalled that we should be in a position where we should be exposed and contaminated without consent. So when I heard that Sancho Bane was filing a variance petition, I honestly said, ah, this is a little bit of retaliatory, you know, action towards the town's appeal. The town's appeal is spot on. The town's commentary about this variance, I have read it all, it's excellent. We citizens stand behind every sentence in there. I then had a conversation with Kathy Beam, who walked me through what all this means, and she pointed me to the statutes that talk about how the decision-making is made. So when I read this, the four determinations, the criteria that has to be met, I thought to myself, wow, this corporation has enjoyed the luxury of their control in their perfect, you know, business climate that they've had, they've taken advantage of this state. The denial, the minimization, and the arrogance we have all seen from the beginning is really evidence in the fact that they feel confident enough to file this variance request thinking that they can meet the four criteria for decision-making. One, the petitioner has taken reasonable steps to eliminate or prevent air pollution. My simple answer to that is, you've been polluting our air, that then contaminated groundwater, produce, affected or wastewater treatment plant, which we have to remediate, everything. The cost to health, the cost in expenses of this community, 17 years on record. Two, granting a variance would not create a danger to public health, welfare, or safety. That is appalling to think that they could be granted this variance and they're hiding behind this, well, you guys haven't really proved it, have you? You know, there's no evidence, it's this dispute of science. The science is there, anyone in 10 minutes of a Google search can look for themselves. Their air emissions are a danger to public health. There actually is health studies about inflammosomes and air emissions and vapor forms of PFAS, and more will be on the way. I'm involved in a project that I've initiated with some epidemiologists that will be looking at this exposure in our area. That will be happening, and I look forward to presenting those results to the community in the future. Three, stating that the source of air pollution has social economic value... Three, stating that the source of air pollution has social economic value to the area in which it's located.
Ms. Allen, you're, you're now over our five minute limit.
So the social economic value refers to the jobs and taxes they bring to us. I think we all in this town can agree that it's not worth it. You know, there is businesses in this town who bring revenues, business and create jobs. They also don't contaminate us. There's no comparison. And most of all, to state that the enforcement of this requirement would produce serious economic hardships on the petitioner without equal or greater benefits to the community. Well, I'll wrap this up by saying proportionately, if we look at the cost to every household, health impacts, water remediation, systems that people have put in and the air that we breathe and our whole environment, the cost to the town, the cost to rate payers, water payers, sewer payers, and costs that we will incur forever. If we look at that and we do a percentile of what that means to us, I'm a social worker. I don't make a big income. I know the impact on my, my livelihood, that this has really taken a toll. Missed work from time in the expenses I've incurred to be safe. Now we look at the hardship to the corporation. Their profits are up. They have a sole bidder, massive DoD contract currently. And it appears to me that this is the only facility that St. Cobain has in all of the new, all of the continent, the Americas, that they can get away with this because their other facilities are not engaged in utilizing the chemicals and the format that they're doing here, not one of them. I spent extensive time. I urge you to deny this petition. Their experts put out a plan in March of 2019.
I'll have to ask you to wrap up here. Thank you.
They'd be done by now if they did the right thing and started then. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your testimony.
Thank you, Ms. Allen. We're next going to hear from Wolf, Wolfram Von Schoen. After that, I'd like to try again to get Representative Susan Bale. Following that, we have Senator Shannon Chanley. And we have a number of people lined up behind that. So in a moment, Mr. Von Schoen, I will unmute you. When I do so, please state your name, address, and who you represent. Mr. Von Schoen, you have the floor.
Again, please try to limit your testimony to five minutes. We have a number of people who would like to speak tonight and we need, we need to stick to this time limit if possible. So I'd appreciate it and I will let you know when you reach five minutes. Thank you.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you. Go ahead.
Excellent. My name is Wolfram Von Schoen. I'm from Four Conservation Drive in Merrimack. I'm also Vice Chairman of the Board of Commissioners of the Merrimack Village District Waterworks. And I would actually like to read a one-page letter from the Board of Directors to Mr. Wright, the Director of the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services, dated July 29. For St. Cobain to use the COVID pandemic as a reason to delay their permit compliance is wrong. Every day they are allowed to operate without air emission treatment is a day the residents of Merrimack and other towns are subject to pollution. The continued lack of air filtration results in St. Cobain emissions, not only in the, in the air, excuse me, in the air, but falling to the ground. Evidence of these continued air emission impact can be found in the Merrimack Village District Community Exposure Assessment Summary Report by the Department of Health and Human Services, dated September 2017. That report found greater PFOA blood impacts residents in closer proximity to St. Cobain. The recent passing of the new, new lower PFAS drinking water maximum contaminant levels, MCLs, and their signing into law by the governor means that all of MBD's wells are now essentially at or over the PFOA MCL of 12 parts per trillion. While St. Cobain denies responsibility for impacting any MBD wells, their continued PFAS air emissions near MBD's public water supply wells can only have negative impacts. The DES's and New Hampshire Attorney General's Establishment of a groundwater management zone for PFAS contamination attributed to St. Cobain in the town of Merrimack further demonstrates the public impacts of St. Cobain's continued unabated air emissions. St. Cobain is a well-capitalized French company with $41 billion in revenue in 2018. If they wanted to, dollars, I'm sorry, $41, $41 billion in revenue 2018. If they wanted to procure filtration, they could. Why would the ES accress to their request so that they can make billions without mitigating the pollution they are creating in the state of New Hampshire and for New Hampshire citizens that is a byproduct of their own processes? We expect our state government to protect us. Granting this request puts corporate interests above the health of our status. We urge you to deny this variance request and appreciate it. This is signed by Donald Proventure, the Chairman of the Board of Commissioners, Commissioners and myself, the Vice Chairman of the Board of Commissioners and all Commissions of the Merrimack Village District. As a private citizen, I would also like to add that my employer is currently installing over the course of 2020 a three projects in the automation, in the automated warehouse industry ranging from $10 million to $45 million. And we are doing this without delay. All three projects are on time. And a magnitude, many magnitudes larger and more complex than a project like the one presented here to be granted a variance. And there is no comparison in, 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 in the complexity of the, of the project. And if a small to midsize company like my employer with 150 employees can deliver a project of that magnitude, I believe so can St. Cobain here in Merrimack. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your testimony.
Thank you. Next, I would like to try again to get Representative Suzanne Bale. And then on deck, we have Senator Shannon Chanley and then Nancy Murphy. Representative Bale, I'm about to unmute you. Please start by stating your name, address, and who you represent. You have the floor.
My name is Suzanne Bale and I am a New Hampshire State Representative from Nashville, Ward 3. I live at 28 Morton Street in Nashville. And I am speaking in opposition to the proposed variance. I think that we know that the water is affected. We can't agree to wait. We shouldn't be asked to wait when contaminated water is an insensational threat to the water supplies. But we're already aware of that are continuing and also neighboring towns. And as things get to be affected, unfiltered emissions affect a greater and greater number of people. We have a water supply to protect in Nashville and we have to implement, we have to implement new standards. The costing, the inconvenience and the difficulty to taxpayers and residents and the neighboring communities should not be borne by the people in my town and in the town of Merrimack, the surrounding towns such as Litchfield and Amherst and Winford and all of the towns that are involved. These, these expenses need to be borne by St. Cobain. We are doing what we have to do and we're paying for this. We can't wait to wait. We shouldn't have to. We shouldn't have to live with this long lines of words. And on behalf of myself and my constituents, I respectfully ask that we deny this petition for a variance. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your testimony.
Thank you. Next, we will be hearing from Senator Shannon Chanley. Behind that, we have Nancy Murphy and then Dawn Cummings. Senator Chanley, when I unmute you, please start by stating your name, address, and who you represent. You now have the floor. Senator Chanley, if you can hear me, we have unmuted you from this end. We are awaiting your testimony. We don't hear from you in a moment. We'll move on and try again after the next person.
Senator, we can't hear you, so we're, we're going to go ahead. We'll come back to you. Yes, if, if you're having difficulties, please call Mick King at 271-6893.
All right. Thank you. We will now move on and try to get Ms. Nancy Murphy on the line. And then we will try to get back to Senator Shannon Chanley after that. And then we will hear from Dawn Cummings. Ms. Murphy, when I unmute you again, please start by stating your name, address, and who you represent. And you now have the floor.
Good evening. Thank you for taking my testimony. My name is Nancy Murphy, address 20 Brenda Lane, Merrimack, New Hampshire. I'm a New Hampshire State Representative for the town of Merrimack. I've submitted written testimony, but I wish to share some of it on the record. As a New Hampshire State Representative for the town of Merrimack and the prime sponsor and member of the 2019 New Hampshire HB 737 Commission on the Environmental and Public Health Impacts of Perfluorochemicals in the Air, Soil and Groundwater in Merrimack, Bedford and Litchfield, I wish to express my strong opposition to St. Cobain Performance Plastics Variance Petition Request for an extension of the air permit TP 0256. The best available scientific evidence has shown that PFAS, a group of man-made toxic chemicals that bio, bioaccumulate in our bodies, can lead to adverse human health effects for exposed populations and do not break down in our environment. Science-based drinking water PFAS maximum contaminant levels have been instituted and continually reduced as more peer-reviewed science becomes available, indicating increased risk to human health at lower exposure. Title 10 of the New Hampshire Revised Statutes, Public Health Chapter 125-O, Multiple Pollutant Reduction Program, Section 125-O, Section 1 states, "The general court finds that while air quality has improved in recent years, scientific advances have demonstrated that adequate protection of public health, environmental quality and economic well-being, the three cornerstones of New Hampshire's equality of life requires additional concerted reductions in air pollutant emissions." New Hampshire DES has both the responsibility and opportunity to provide these protections by denying St. Cobain its requested air permit extension. St. Cobain has made a conscious decision not to take voluntary reasonable steps to eliminate or prevent emission of PFAS despite having knowledge of the need and access to the financial resources and technology to do so. Business decisions have long been made by St. Cobain to protect profits rather than the environment and public health. We know that Kemfab was acquired by St. Cobain in 2000. Letters between the company and the state of Vermont in the mid 1990s show that Kemfab made it very clear to Vermont regulators that if Vermont continued to require certain stack pollution devices at a cost of over $300,000 a year, the Bennington operations might be moved to New Hampshire. One document indicates that as Merrimack New Hampshire facility operated its PTFE processing lines without a catalytic abatement, a move to New Hampshire would also save St. Cobain the $50,000 energy cost to run the catalytic, catalytic abaters that Vermont was requiring. In 2001, the Bennington Vermont Kemfab plant manager told a local paper that one of the motivators for closing the plant there and moving its operations where it doubled its capacity to Merrimack in 2002 was to escape Vermont's more demanding and costly pollution regulations. St. Cobain is still trying. A lack of adequate environmental pollution controls on St. Cobain's production towers resulted in the PFAS contamination of soil and groundwater, which has impacted our municipal drinking water supply. As a result of the drinking water contamination, MBD public wells 4 and 5 were shut down. They remain offline, awaiting the completion of construction and installation of PFAS filtration equipment. As Wolf had mentioned prior, the September 2016 MBD Community Exposure Assessment Summary Report completed by New Hampshire Health and Human Services indicates that Merrimack Village District customers have two to three times the concentration of PFOA in their blood as compared to the national averages, with blood serum levels increasing with proximity to the St. Cobain site. Even with this knowledge, St. Cobain continues to discharge PFAS from its facility and seeks to be allowed to continue to do so despite the known risks to the environment, public and private wells, and public health. The costs and impacts to New Hampshire citizens who've been impacted by St. Cobain are numerous. In 2018, I was part of a concerned citizens group that collected petition signatures asking St. Cobain to filter the drinking water for our schoolchildren and staff. St. Cobain refused. In 2019, Merrimack Village District customers approved warrant articles totaling $14.5 million that will provide for the design and construction of water treatment systems to reduce PFAS on MBD wells 2, 3, 7, and 8, which though they're not assigned this responsibility of St. Cobain, are contaminated as well. Many residents have chosen not to grow vegetables in the gardens. Many bear ongoing cost of bottled drinking water and in-home filtration systems. When the necessary closure of two public wells, the MBD has had to purchase water from Penachuck Water Works at increased cost. Citizens have been mandated to comply with water restrictions to protect supply for drinking water in emergency needs. MBD customers will bear the financial burden of 1.8 million underfunded settlement agreement and filtration-related maintenance of wells 4 and 5, beginning at year 5 post-filtration treatment completion in perpetuity. Citizens feel taken advantage of and frustrated that not only has St. Cobain not taken full financial responsibility for the cost to address the PFAS contamination it created, it has also been allowed to continue to pollute our air, water, and soil. St. Cobain is passing on the associated cost to citizens. A two-year investigation by New Hampshire DES included stack tests in 2016 and 2018 to evaluate both the PFAS compound emissions from the facility and the effectiveness of a pilot scale control device. Stack testing in 2018 indicated the EPA detected 190 different PFAS and tentatively, tentatively identified 89 PFAS compounds in the samples. The investigation concluded that the facility continued to have emissions of PFAS compounds which could contribute to the existing groundwater exceedances of the state ambient groundwater quality standard, which at the time were 70 parts per trillion for PFOA and PFAS, both separately and combined. Recognizing the risk to public health and those most vulnerable, New Hampshire PFAS MCLs and AGQS for four PFAS, including PFOA, have been lowered with the passage of NH House Bill 1264. Given that AGQS has been reduced significantly, that St. Cobain continues to expose Merrimack and other surrounding communities to its unfiltered PFAS air emissions, and that New Hampshire is acknowledging increased risk of health harm at even lower levels of PFOA exposure, Merrimack residents need to be able to rely upon state health and environmental protection agencies to act on behalf of impacted citizens and community and deny St. Cobain's air permit extension. Any actions St. Cobain claims to have taken to stop the spread of PFAS contamination of our community has been insufficient. The technology has long been available to stop PFAS intermissions and with $42.5 billion in revenue in 2019, a 50.2% sharp increase in free cash flow and a nearly $1 billion reduction in net debt from 2018 to 2019, there is no question that St. Cobain has had the financial resources to install those technologies. St. Cobain's assets are-
Representative Murphy, you're well over the five minutes at this point. If you could begin to wrap up, I'd appreciate it.
Thank you. St. Cobain's assets far exceed those of the town of Merrimack and its citizens, the very citizens whose lives and health have been impacted by their manufacturing processes. Every day that the state of New Hampshire allows St. Cobain to delay compliance is another day it is allowed to take advantage of New Hampshire citizens. See. We're all aware of the very concerning biodegradation and bioaccumulation properties of PFAS, the negative health impacts known to be associated with the exposure, that more protective PFAS MCLs for drinking water are vital to the public health protections of our most vulnerable citizens, and that the ever-growing body of science indicates stopping exposure to PFAS is a priority of the highest order. Thank you for consideration of my request to deny St. Cobain this extension of its air permit. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your testimony. We appreciate you taking the time.
Next, we will be hearing from Dawn Cummings. But before we give the floor to Dawn Cummings, I just want to give a couple of notes. We, again, we are using the question function primarily to identify people who want to provide testimony. You do not need to put substantive comments in your question. It is just an indication that you want to speak to us so that you can provide your testimony orally. I also received a note that someone missed the opportunity to ask a clarifying question, so I will put you on the queue so that we can unmute you and you can speak. So next, we will be hearing from Dawn Cummings. And behind that, Shirley Ann Pierce.
Again, please be respectful of the five-minute time limit. We have a number of commenters, so thank you. Go ahead.
So now, Mr. Cummings- Now, Mr. Cummings, when I give you the floor, please start by stating your name, address, and who you represent. And you have the floor.
Thank you for giving this opportunity. My name's Dawn Cummings of 18 Premier Drive in Londonderry. I represent my family, and I oppose this request for a variance from St. Cobain. I would like to see, so forgive me for my ignorance, but may I ask a question?
If it's a question about the procedure, yes. With regards to the variance itself, and I will handle it, we probably won't be able to address that, but go ahead and ask your question.
Who decides if this variance is granted?
That is the decision of the Director of the Air Resources Division, Director Craig Wright. We will absorb all the comments and information presented to us by the company in this testimony in this public hearing. And we will write up a decision which will be approved by Director Craig Wright of the Air Resources Division.
Okay, so it's actually one person that makes this decision?
Ultimately, yes.
So it seems pretty unanimous that folks don't want this to go. So why are we even, you know, where is the advocacy for residents of New Hampshire? I'd like to ask this question. Who is supporting the variance? I want to know who, with your division, your department, I'd like it to go on record. I want to know who thinks this is a good idea to let them extend?
The variance has been requested by St. Cobain. The purpose of tonight's hearing is for people to provide testimony. At this, as of this point, you have not heard from anyone who seeks to support it, but that doesn't mean that, again, our commentary is going to be extended. And if we receive comments and support, we'll address those as well.
So if across the board, everyone in New Hampshire wants this to be denied, is it a no-brainer that Craig is going to deny it?
We won't comment on that, sir.
Okay, well, I hope if he does deny it, that maybe there'll be an investigation to see if there's any, you know, kickbacks or, you know, gee, did he receive any special perks from St. Cobain? Because this seems like a no-brainer situation. So thank you for allowing me to voice my opinion in this forum.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cummings. We will next hear from Cheryl Ann Pierce. Behind that, we're going to attempt to get Senator Shannon Chanley back. And then behind that, we have Representative Rosemarie Rung. Ms. Pierce, when I unmute you, please start by stating your name, address, and who you represent. Ms. Pierce, you have the floor.
Thank you. My name is Cheryl Ann Pierce. I live at 23 Mayflower Drive in Londonderry. I represent myself, and I represent all others who have or had or are known to have died from cancer since St. Cobain came to town. The substantiation of why the variant should not be granted seems clearly to have been addressed by all the previous speakers. I had tried to ask questions. I couldn't ask questions. I spoke with Kathy, I'm sorry, Margaret, and she suggested that if I put my questions in the little white box, that of course she would answer them. And then I got a blurb that said, "This isn't the place to ask questions, lady." And then I got, I apologize for the confusion. I'll put you in the queue and note that we missed you during the Ask Questions of the Hearing. My most important question is, how many other questions did you miss?
We're not aware of any others.
Could you put that out to the audience, please? Could you put the hand back up?
If people want to testify right now, they can. And you are the only person that has indicated that they missed that opportunity at this point.
So do I ask all those questions now? In the beginning, I asked you, how many questions can I ask? And nobody answered me. And Margaret King assured me that if I entered them in here, they would all be answered.
There may be some confusion where the Ask Question function is being used to indicate that you want to provide testimony on the variance.
I absolutely understand that. I was directed by Margaret King to put my questions here.
Well, go ahead.
Answered them.
Go ahead. Go ahead with your questions. If there are questions that we can answer, we will attempt to do so.
Okay, I can't. I can't see my questions anymore. I had several questions. According to RSA 210:14 and N V A C 200, the appeals of N V A 202.8 refer to any person can appeal whatever the decision is made within 30 days. Does that include the company of St. Cobain or any representative of that company?
Any aggrieved party can appeal that decision within a 30-day period.
Would you be more specific, please? Can St. Cobain appeal?
Yes, yes, St. Cobain can appeal that. Yeah, sorry for not being-
Just go on and on and on. How many times can they appeal?
There's a legal process set up, and that would be handled by the New Hampshire Air Resources Council. But once the appeal is generally heard, there is, based on past appeals, there's generally an opportunity for one of the parties to file a motion for reconsideration. And the council may agree to that, or they may deny that. And then generally after that, it goes to the New Hampshire Supreme Court.
For your information-
So it's a legal, it's a legal process that needs to be followed. It is set in statute.
For your information, the Air Resources Council is a separate body from the Air Resources Division. They're an advisory body of appointees by the governor, who, and one of their responsibilities is to hear appeals of directors' decisions.
Okay. Another question I have is whether or not you folks can ask your health division to collect evidence of how many people have had cancer or have cancer and what, how that has affected the quality of life for them and their families? And how many people do they know that died of cancer that are in the GMZ since 2003?
At this point, I don't think it would be appropriate for us to comment on that. Let's see. But I will answer by saying that DES can seek all the information that we feel is necessary to make this decision following the statutory requirements. And if that was determined, if it was determined that that information were, would assist us in making a decision on this, we certainly could seek that input.
Okay.
We will comment on whether, or how we are going to deal with this. We will put out a decision and address all comments that have been made to us. And I would encourage you to make that comment if you feel that that's appropriate.
I think I just did, but I'll be glad to email it to Kathy.
Thank you.
I have another question. When the audio was blacked out at 6:14, I neglected to mention to you that the number of the temporary permit could not be heard. And I have since heard it during testimony. If you could verify what that number is for that permit, please?
We can do that, yes.
Temporary permit TP-0256.
Thank you. I also read that the decision would not be made just by Craig Wright, but that it would be made with the Attorney General, Gordon McDonald. Is that true or not?
I'm not sure where you might have read that, but there is a specific procedure. The decision on whether to deny or to approve this variance request rests with Director Wright based on input that he receives in this proceeding and the input from St. Cobain themselves and any other information that he believes is relevant. And then if that is appealed, it would go to the Air Resources Council, as we so stated. And that decision could ultimately be appealed by any party to the New Hampshire Supreme Court. So-
Okay. So where can we view St. Cobain's input?
It's the petition itself.
Just the petition-
That's correct. And the information that they provided in response to our request, all of which is available on our website, Kathy.
It's available on our One Stop database, and the facility and permit number were on one of my slides that I presented.
Yes, I'm aware, but I couldn't see the slides either.
All the slides will be up on our website tomorrow, we hope. So we can, and this proceeding, the video of this proceeding, video and audio, will also be posted very shortly. So.
Okay.
We can, we can-
I really, really appreciate you offering me the chance to ask my questions. I am also wondering, why are you allowed for 1,000 people to register and only 59 people registered? We only have five minutes each.
We believe that that's a reasonable amount of time. And we are trying to give everyone a fair opportunity to provide their information. They certainly, again, the comment period is going to be extended for another week, so people can certainly send us written comments as well.
Okay. I will include in an email the reference to the statute that says that it would be decided by the Director of the Division of Waste Management, Craig Wright, and the Attorney General, Gordon McDonald.
Okay, we'll certainly send us any information that you want, and we will take that into account in our, in our decision. And for your benefit, Kathy, if you could just repeat the One Stop number and the permit number.
Yeah, so the facility number, which, when you open up One Stop and ask for an identifier to start the search, that would be 3301100165. And the permit number, if you go looking underneath the air portion of the One Stop page, talk about permit, permit number is, or application of, is 20- Yeah, on the slides. Right, 20-0145, sorry.
Is that slide up on the screen now? So that, the information that we're giving you is up on the screen right now. And feel free to call Ms. King tomorrow if you're having difficulty finding the information.
Oh, so now I ask Ms. King for help with this?
Actually, just, why don't you contact Kathy? Yeah, you can also-
I can continue to contact Kathy.
That's fine.
Okay. And so may I just read this back to you to make sure that I wrote it down correctly? I go to One Stop, and then the number is 3301100165. Is that correct?
Yeah.
And then 20-0145.
That's correct. That's correct, yes.
Thank you for allowing me to ask my questions.
Thank you very much. We're, we're, sorry for any confusion that might have occurred. And I will gladly answer your questions to the extent-
I accept your apology, and that's the way this stuff goes. So moving right along.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
What do we have next?
Okay, thank you, Ms. Pierce. So next, we're going to hear from Senator Shannon Chanley, followed by Representative Rosemarie Rung. And at this point, those are the last two people who have requested to provide testimony. Again, if you would like to speak to DES and provide your testimony, use the GoToWebinar question function and submit a question to us. You could just input your name, address, and who you represent, submit it to us. We will see it and put you in the queue. So again, now we will hear from Senator Shannon Chanley. Senator, when I unmute you, please state your name, address, and who you represent. And you now have the floor.
Thank you very much. This is Shannon Chanley. My address is 3 High Meadow Lane in Amherst, New Hampshire. And I just want to clarify that I am being heard.
Yes, you are.
Very good. And thank you to everyone at the Air Resources Division for holding this hearing, and thank you to Meg King for her help. I appreciate it greatly. You've heard a lot of information. I will not repeat what Senator Deech and other representatives have talked about, but I do want to respectfully suggest that St. Cobain Performance Plastics has, that their request does not meet the criteria for a variance to be issued. Because granting the variance would delay indeed the installation of equipment intended to protect public health, it stands to reason that to do so could imperil the health, safety, and well-being of the residents of Merrimack and the surrounding communities. I represent District 11 in the New Hampshire State Senate, which includes Wilton, Milford, Amherst, and Merrimack. And at least two of those communities have been affected by PFAS. Based on current scientific data, including the work that was done by the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services, the New Hampshire General Court passed, and Governor Sununu signed, legislation to establish maximum contaminant levels for PFAS to protect public health and safety. The prompt installation of a regenerative thermal oxidizer by St. Cobain at their Merrimack, New Hampshire facility is imperative to ensure that further risk to the people of our community is minimized. Thank you so much for your consideration, and I look forward to listening to the rest of this public hearing.
Senator, thank you very much for your comments, and we appreciate your perseverance in getting through to us. We apologize for any difficulties you might have had. So I'd-
All right. Next, we have Representative Rosemarie Rung. And following that, we have one more signed up, Kristen Ayers. Representative-
Again, before we go to Representative Rung, I just want to remind people, if you do have an interest in providing oral testimony, follow the procedures that Todd has outlined. Use the Ask a Question function. It's still open, so if you decide you want to speak, we're still available to allow that to occur. So with that, Representative Rung, go ahead. Representative Rung, we're not hearing you.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can, there you go.
Oh, great, thank you. And thank you very much for holding this hearing. I submitted written testimony, but I'd like to read it into the record, considering that this public hearing is being recorded. My name is Rosemarie Rung. I reside at 21 Ministerial Drive in Merrimack. I'm a state representative for Merrimack, representing Hillsborough 21. I'm also a member of the House Bill 737 PFAS Commission. In those roles and as a resident of Merrimack, I urge you to deny the request by Saint Gobain Performance Plastics for a variance to extend its air permit. As established by its history of operations in Housick Falls, New York, and Bennington, Vermont, Saint Gobain is well aware that its air emissions cause groundwater contamination. They are well aware of the scientific studies that document health risk from PFAS contaminated water. The soil in and around their facility in Merrimack and in towns downwind is contaminated to the point where neighbors of their Merrimack facility are told not to disturb soil in their yards. If you delay the deadline for the air permit, the soil load will increase, allowing more PFAS to leach into groundwater, adding to the health risks already faced by our communities. Allow me to tell you what will not be delayed by your decision. Couples will continue to begin their families. Babies will be born and nursed, and children will play in yards, ball fields, and playgrounds. They don't have a choice to delay their lives and to delay the risk of ongoing PFAS contamination from Saint Gobain's operations. New Hampshire DES set maximum contaminant levels to be protective of human health. The New Hampshire General Court and Governor passed this into law. We did not delay this legislation because of inconveniences. Please do not delay Saint Gobain's installation of a regenerative thermal oxidizer. Saint Gobain is a global multi-billion dollar conglomerate with access to immense resources to meet its obligations. I want to thank you very much for your consideration.
Again, thank you for your testimony and for your perseverance in getting through to us. Appreciate it. Todd, do we have any other?
Yes, right now we have one more person, Kristen Ayers. And again, the question function is still open. So if anybody else would like to speak to us, provide testimony, submit a question. But right now, we will hear from Kristen Ayers. Ms. Ayers, when I unmute you, please start by stating your name, address, and who you represent. You now have the floor.
Ms. Ayers, we can't hear you. If you're muted on your end, please unmute.
Hello, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Oh, perfect. Okay, thank you for bearing with me. My name is Kristen Ayers. I live at 19 Jake's Lane, Merrimack, New Hampshire. Can you hear me okay?
We can hear you just fine, thank you.
Perfect, thank you. I am speaking, I had no intention of speaking. I did sign up as a possible person to give testimony. And I thank you for this opportunity. I am speaking on behalf of the residents of Merrimack and surrounding communities that are faced with this issue directly each day. And really, I just, I want to take the time to reiterate what has already been said. I haven't heard anything, you know, positive as far as why this should be considered. And I want to speak to the, is it the gentleman in the back that is making this decision?
Director Wright, yes.
Yes, okay, Director Wright. I, I'd like to just speak with you directly. I want to reiterate what was already said. You know, my family has decided to, we used to garden and once the whole PFAS situation, you know, came about and once we realized what was going on, we decided to stop gardening. And this is the first year that we are starting again. And every time my daughter brings produce into the house, I do wonder how much contamination is in that. And we have taken precautions and spent a lot of money on bottled water and protecting ourselves. And we are not rich people. We do not have the money to truck in water for our pool just because we're concerned with the thermal exposure. We really have taken precautions to, to make ourselves safe. And I really encourage you to consider denying this variance. It isn't fair. We did not ask for this contamination. We are not making money off of this. In fact, we lose money every day. And I just want you to think of my 16-year-old that is trying to grow vegetables. And one of her good friends that's doing a research project on the amount of PFAS in our water. And I, I think that if you think of the youth that have unfortunately been drinking this water for many, many years, it bioaccumulates. We still have not been able to test my daughter, even though we were willing to pay out of pocket. That's another whole thing. But I just want you to know what we've been through. And when you're making this decision, think of these people that have already taken so many obstacles and hurdles to try to create safety for ourselves. And this company has shown no interest. I know that you're supposed to follow those four requirements. They're supposed to show that they're, you know, trying to do their due diligence with providing safety for us. They have done zero. None of that has happened. And I just really encourage you to think of the name Shannon Ayers. Think of the youth of Merrimack, think of the youth of Bedford and of Litchfield and London Derry and all of the folks that really do not ask for this. Saint Gobain is sending it into our air and we are drinking it and eating it every single day and we're done. So please, please deny this, I ask you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your testimony. We'll take it into consideration. Todd, do we have anybody else at this point?
We have no one else who has submitted a question requesting to provide testimony. At this point, I'd like to open up the raise hand function again, just to ensure that if someone can't use the question function, that they could use that to identify themselves. So we're going to open up the raise hand function. And if you would like to provide testimony, you can let us know by either clicking the hand symbol or typing a question. Now, let's see, can you monitor the hands?
We'll give it another minute or so to, yeah. Make sure that everybody has the opportunity if they so desire.
I saw a hand pop up, but it took it down to be verified with them.
Keep an eye on it for a minute. Keep it close back up. We did see one hand come up and went back down. We do have, we do have any.
Now it's back, now it's back up.
Okay.
All right.
Who do we have?
Cheryl Ann Pierce.
Okay. Okay.
All right. So we have one hand raised from Cheryl Ann Pierce. Ms. Pierce, when I call on you, even though that you've already spoken, we'd like for each time for you to state your name, address, and who you represent. Ms. Pierce, you have the floor.
Thank you. I see that I'm unmuted. I am Cheryl Ann Pierce, 23 Mayflower Drive, London Derry, New Hampshire. I represent myself and all others who have had or have or are known to have died from cancer since 2002, who live in the GMZ. My one final question is, of the 59 who registered, how many were not elected public officials?
I don't, I don't know that we have that number for you right now. You can, you can send Kathy a question tomorrow and, you know, we, we can break that down. But we don't know how at this, at this point, we just, we haven't gone through that, that data. So we haven't done that exercise, but we certainly can provide that to you.
Okay, just anecdotally, I've, I wonder if anyone else has observed that there aren't too many of us that are just residents.
Yes, so there were 59 people that registered when I talked to you earlier today. More have registered since then. Many of them chose not to testify, even though they weren't representatives of the Congress. And in addition, I've gotten about 175 emails of comments, of written comments. So those represented none.
And again, is there any other input from Saint Gobain than simply requesting the variance?
So we requested additional information from them. They submitted additional information. All of that is on One Stop. I can work with you if you want.
Okay, it seems to me that DES responded to them asking further clarification and additional questions. Am I wrong about that?
We requested additional information, that's correct. And that letter is on One Stop. And their response to that letter is also on One Stop.
I see. Thank you very much for clarifying that. I appreciate it. I'm sorry, I'm not a real smooth speaker. I'm unfortunately way more passionate than I can be rational right now. Thank you for listening.
We, we thank you for taking the time and we hope we're able to clarify your questions. Again, feel free, free to contact Kathy to assist you. But basically, the input information that we doubt is the Saint Gobain variance request, the follow-up information that they responded to our letter, and then all of the information that we received, both in the emails to Kathy and tonight. And also, it should be noted that we understand that this is a complicated format. And so we are extending the comment period for one week until four o'clock on August 12th. So please let anyone know that you encounter that feels that they didn't have the opportunity or couldn't navigate this platform, that they still have the opportunity to send comments to Kathy via email. And we're, we're happy to try to help you. Todd, Ms. Pierce, is that everything? Have we answered all your questions?
No, I, I'm a little bit concerned that the ability for people to become aware that there has been additional time allowed for email comment needs to be better. I don't want to, I don't know if I want to use the word advertised. I, I don't see how word of mouth is going to let a whole lot more people know that they have another week.
So when we post the presentation from tonight on our blog tomorrow, we will note that on the blog as well. And everyone that's ever registered before that, to get information from the blog, will get an email. Get them to pick it up on the blog works, so.
So only people so far that figured it out will get a little reminder to, by the way, tell somebody else.
Well, anybody that goes to, to the website and sees that, sees our blog, those that have registered for the blog, as Kathy said, will, will get a email reminder. But anybody that sees the blog, that information will be up.
I beg to differ that publishing it somewhere needs to be at least considered. And we're talking about more than the Merrimack Leader and the Union Journal. It needs to be much better publicized than just that. There are hundreds more of us impacted by that than will ever have the opportunity to read or see the Merrimack Journal or can afford to buy the Union Leader. That's the end of my comments.
Thank you. I, I would just note that the, this hearing is being carried by the Merrimack Public Cable Channel. So anyone that's watching at home will have this information also.
Again, and that be shared with all the cable access TVs of all the other municipalities that have been acknowledged to have PFAs higher than 12 in their parts per trillion in their water. Because you sent it to my town manager and he never put it on the town website.
Right. We will endeavor to do our best to get that information as widely distributed as, as we can. Gary, do you have a?
Well, I just wanted to say, for those who are interested in this issue, they, they generally are well aware that the DES has a webpage where we provide updates on, on everything. So you know, if somebody wants to go on tomorrow, watch this evening's hearing, and then go ahead and submit a comment over the next week, they'll have that ability. The Union Leader and the Merrimack Journal were two newspapers that we published in. And I understand with your comment that it somewhat relies on your town officials. But we also did send copies of that to not just the town of Merrimack, but the town of London Derry, the town of Bedford, the town of Litchfield, the town of Hudson. And just to, when we, when we were originally setting the date for the hearing, to notify them so that we also would have a local notification to the extent possible.
Do you know when those were sent?
Well, they were sent, they would have been sent around the time the original notice went in, the Union Leader, I believe.
So the cover letter was dated June 19th. And I emailed it out to all of those people that within that week.
Okay. So about six weeks ago. And certainly feel free to comment to us. We, we take it as a comment now that we're talking to you, that you feel there needs to be better distribution. But feel free to send that as a written comment as well.
I certainly will.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Todd, do we have anyone else?
Yes, we have three more people who indicated they would like to speak. We'll first hear from Ivan Soto, then Loreen Allen, followed by Ashley Tenha. Mr. Soto, we'll call on you first. When I, when I unmute you, please start by stating your name, address, and who you represent. You now have the floor.
Good evening. My name is Ivan Soto. I live in Hudson, New Hampshire. Talking about the situation where the PFA and Merrimack, New Hampshire, working the company almost for 20 years. And I know the company not follow the protocol that the state I worked through the whole entire community situation. They go out of control with that. They send me the chemicals, they put water cleanup. They not put it to work almost, they finished in June. Then the EPA do a ground test, they came out, the level was so high for PFA. And then they started this system work. I might know why that company is so powerful. Because they stayed in New Hampshire to do palm, to TM, they don't see San Gobain. When San Gobain polluted the town of Merrimack. It just, it's something wrong in here. It just, I don't get it. They don't care about the workers. They don't send us to do the tests. Send us to do the test, I think it was in 2017 or 16, or never got it, we saw back. So I think to the decimal in the back, before you make a decision, think like a brother, fathers, mothers, and sister. They are human beings. It's okay, San Gobain can make profile, but apply with the standard of state request. They already rumor they, they're not going to do it to 2021 in the company, the floor. So to my concern is, how far and powerful the company are with the state of New Hampshire? Or have a meeting with Mr. Tom Kadisky? And Tom Kadisky have a meeting with the government, the state, Mr. Sununu. And why they not have a meeting with the town of New Hampshire? Why they throw the town of New Hampshire? Why they told the town of New Hampshire, so I have a meeting? No news, no, nothing has to be allowed in the meeting. Why? Why they hiding? They knew it from the beginning because they send us to testing. They knew what they doing, they know what they doing. And yes, a lie, it's a lie to the end. And I hope so, and I pray that you guys make the right decision to take care. The future generation don't go through, but are going through. I see my friend that for cancer, she never drink, she never smoke. Cancer, she live in Merrimack, almost five miles away for the company. It's just breaking heart for me. Sometime I think, go back, Sangoban knew it because if the federal government, the EPA, the United States fines DuPont a hundred and seven million dollar for the same situation. Contaminations. I still, I still doing it. When all money stop, so the company, you can be making profit for the same time or can protect our community, or can go over, check it out. For two hundred work job, I'm sorry, job. The Sangoban created, you want to justify almost thirty thousand people that live in Merrimack, New Hampshire? Well, except to the town. Now the town see the way it was run, right? It's okay, being tested, being paid a job, that's fine. But what, I manage with almost thirty thousand citizen for two hundred job? I have to be more concerned about the situation right now. Even Tom Kadisky say he like people in New Hampshire, but I don't like people in New York. Because they take things serious, or take things serious in New York. This is a serious issue. It's a nationwide problems. It's not only Merrimack, it's nationwide problem. When all want to open their eyes, say, listen, it's a nationwide problem. You want to take the full responsibility and you want to clean it out, you want to care the town. Make it be like a severe issues. Merrimack, London, Derry, Litchfield, Berford, Manchester, same problems, same company. So this company is so powerful. It is so, the way I carry this, they use intimidation too because they do it to our work. When the team break out, or don't allow to talk to the news, that they send the news or not have to say nothing. Don't say nothing, just come to work the city. When I want to stop, they not make sense. And like I say, I hope so the decima in the back take this thing serious and say, listen, you have to take full responsibility. They told you two thousand twenty and they beginning two thousand twenty-one, that's it. Or what to the epidemic, it's excuse that we're using the COVID-19. This is pure excuse. Or what pay twenty-four seven, no stop. And still they use excuse to the state and the EPA to noise start a system. Which is just how far this company can go without be whole accountable.
Sir, you've reached well over five minutes now. I think it's safe to say that you oppose the variants. But your comments are rather wide-ranging. If you have any specific comments on the, on the variants, I give you another minute or so here.
I, 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 thank you, sir. I think my point is this is just top the premise. You know, they know what they doing because they know what they doing. Yes, serious in the matter, the situation is all the company by this. And apply the whole full law to them. That's what it is. That's all I want. To take care of the future generation. That's all my concern. It is that sometime you have to look out further ahead. What got, or what do I want to leave behind for the generation to come? Thank you, sir, for letting me talk. And I know tomorrow I can lose my job, but I can take care of myself. And I just bother me, see people go through every day with the same situation. Company the night, the night, it's just, to the end, no. You got the time? No. You got, you want a permit? Do it legally for the regulation guy put in place. Do it right. It's just, it's a mess.
We appreciate, we appreciate your comments. Again, feel, feel free to send us information in writing if you have specific comments about the variants request. But we thank you for your testimony.
All right. At this point, we have two more people signed up. Next is Lorene Allen, to be followed by Ashley Tenha. Lorene Allen, when I unmute you, please start by stating your name, address, and who you represent. You now have the floor.
Lorene Allen, sixteen French Court, Merrimack Citizens for Clean Water. A very brief comment and just a clarification question. A previous speaker spoke about the extended commentary period and she wanted more word to get out. As she was speaking, something occurred to me. Number one, citizens, really inform citizens, and that's how the word gets out. Hearing people speak tonight, everyone who spoke really cares very much about their community and fellow citizen. So I thank them all. A hundred and seventy-five comments. I'm assuming that the majority of those are from citizens at large, be it elected officials. They're still citizens. We're all citizens, impacted citizens. I have a slight concern. When I heard that we were extending by a week, I understand you want to give people the opportunity, but I had a thought. And my thought was, we know that chemical corporation representatives are hearing this. St. Cobain has their folks hearing this. We have people who are listening and who will watch the video and hear the video, who will be silent. They will not engage with the public. They never engage with the public. And I'm wondering if part of their strategy is to listen and take notes and study and hear. And they have a chance now, they have a week now to almost prepare their rebuttals to the excellent points that many, many entities have made in writing in particular. And my question is, will folks who have a, you know, the stakeholders in the beginning of this were really referred to as corporate, you know, community members were never referred to as stakeholders, which is kind of ironic. So will 3M and BIA and St. Cobain, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, will they have access to our written public comments for the next week before they prepare theirs? That's my question. Thank you.
We would need to consult with the Attorney General on that. But if generally those comments are public information, they, if we received a request for those comments under RSA ninety-one A, we would have to consult with the Attorney General to determine how, what the appropriate response would be. I don't think we can answer that for you right now.
Thank you. It just doesn't seem fair because this is the pattern. Everything that's submitted, everything that's said is scrutinized, schemed, planned. And the resources in the pockets of these entities are immense. And that, that's my, that was my comment. I just want that on record. It's very important to me and our community. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Allen. At this point, we have one more person who's signed up to speak. Again, the question function and raise hand function are still open if you want to sign up to speak. But right now, we will hear from Ashley Tenha. Ms. Tenha, when I unmute you, please start by stating your name, address, and who you represent. You now have the floor. Ms. Tenha, if you're speaking, we cannot hear you. We have unmuted you on this end. And we have no indication that you have muted yourself. And at this point, we have another person who's signed up. So what I'd like to do is move to that next person and allow Ashley Tenha a few moments to get prepared.
Again, if you're having difficulty, we could not hear you. So call, you can call me King or email me King if you're having a problem. But we were not able to hear you.
Okay, we have a request from Catherine Hodge. Ms. Hodge, when I unmute you, please start by stating your name, address, and who you represent. And you now have the floor.
Hi, thank you again. Catherine Hodge, forty-four Belmont Drive, Merrimack, New Hampshire. Speaking as a resident. I just want to go back to something that Lorene Allen had stated. St. Cobain has basically unlimited resources. And I agree with her that it's not fair to the residents if St. Cobain is allowed to get our statements. Because exactly like Lorene said, they are going to pick apart our statements sentence by sentence by sentence and try and say everything that we have said is false. Now, I understand that they cannot dispute the science and that's how we ended up getting our lower MCLs. But if they, if they can sit there and pick apart every word that we say, we know that that's what they're going to do. So once again, that's not fair to us. And as they were speaking about the timeframes, if it wasn't for Merrimack Citizens for Clean Water, half the people wouldn't have known about this. Because it's word of mouth and by email. And there are so many people that still don't know that these meetings are happening. And we have twenty-seven thousand people just in our town. And it's classified as being a small town. So I do agree, and I think it's been mentioned at previous meetings, that there has to be more word available. And in my opinion, it should be coming from yourselves. Our towns can only do so much. We only have so many resources. And unfortunately, a lot of our resources here in Merrimack are being spent on useless, contrived garbage by St. Cobain. So I would just ask you guys if you could do more besides putting it into papers that nobody reads. A lot of people are on Facebook. Put it on Facebook. Or just somehow get the word out further than what has already been done. And then there was just something else that I wanted to quickly point out. PFIB has been found in testing results from St. Cobain. PFIB, I don't know if you guys are aware, it's a Schedule II substance of the Chemical Weapons Convention. So I don't know if you want to take that into consideration. And benzene and tulin have also showed up. And their percentages, sorry, their parts per billion are at five and go all the way up to a hundred parts per billion. And the EPA states that only zero point four parts per billion are allowed over a lifetime. So if they're allowed to get away with those amounts of chemicals, how do you expect us to be able to survive? How do you expect us to be able to take care of our health? Our babies, our families, and all of the residents in town? It's just not going to happen unless there is a stop put to St. Cobain. They've been using and abusing us for so many years. And the products that they are running right now, they used to run in New York. And when problems started occurring there, they got moved up here. Because we have people that we know in New York that will state that fact. And we also know that they moved from Vermont, as Representative Murphy said, because of the regulations that were starting to come down on them there. So they figured, oh, hey, we'll just move to Merrimack and we'll double our production. And they bought it from Kemfab. Kemfab had an RTO system on their stacks before St. Cobain bought them. So why was it okay for St. Cobain to take those off? They had an RTO system, and I do believe that they had scrubbers. Now, all of a sudden, everything's taken off. And for twenty-plus years now, we've been poisoned. And we're tired of it. And we need you guys to step up. And Mr. Wright, we need you to step up. We got screwed over badly by Clark. He's lied in testimony when he was in front of the London Dairy Council. We have that on record as well. So you need to step up, do your job, and stop all of this crap from happening to our town and all of the surrounding towns. We've had it. We've had enough. Thank you again.
Thank you, Ms. Pierce. With regards to your suggestion, we, Facebook suggestion is wonderful. Take it into consideration. We do have a presence on Facebook and we have public information codes, but we'll look into that. Thank you for your testimony. Todd, do we have anybody else at this point?
Yes, I would like to attempt to go back to Ms. Ashley Tenha.
Audio is not set up for Ashley.
And I'm getting word from our technical expert that Ashley will not be able to speak. And we have one person who is.
That's, that's a technical issue, but on her end or?
Yeah.
Okay, so apparently we have a problem. So Ashley, we would certainly encourage you to, to send us comments. As stated, the comment period will be extended and we would encourage you to send us your comments in writing, by email. We apologize. I'm not sure exactly why we're not able to hear you. We've been able to work through these issues with most everybody, so.
Her microphone just popped up.
Okay, Ashley, do we hear you?
She's self-muted.
Ashley, you're self-muted. So if you could unmute yourself on the, with the options on the screen.
Can you hear?
Yes, we hear you.
Okay, so my name's Ashley Tenha. I live at seventy-five Shelburne Road in Merrimack. I'm calling as a board member to the Webster Green condo community. Calling as a concerned board member and as a resident living directly across from St. Cobain. I'm asking that you guys deny their request. Every day, we smell St. Cobain. Every day, we are breathing in whatever they're throwing out of those stacks. We have reported it multiple times that the air quality is terrible. The odors coming from their facility choke you as you walk outside the door. We've also had soot testing done outside of our units. We have terrible black soot that is basically covering our siding, our windows, everything else from that facility. We've had our soil tested. We have not had the water over by us tested that I know of. But as a concerned resident living across the street, breathing in what they're putting out of those stacks every single day, having a child that is also breathing out, breathing in everything that's going in those stacks, I'm seriously asking you to deny this. They have had a year, over a year, to put this all into place and have done nothing. They've, we've had the silent protest outside. We've put in our own requests through DES as a community of Webster Green to have things done. And it's fallen on deaf ears. And we are seriously concerned with their request to extend this even further. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your testimony. We appreciate you working to get through the problems and being able to speak.
All right. So now we have two more people who have requested to speak. We have Cheryl Ann Pierce, and after that, Mindy Messner. Although I believe Ms. Messner has not spoken, Mike, would you like to switch that order? I believe Cheryl Ann has spoken before.
Yes, I'd like to allow Ms. Messner to speak first and we'll come back to. Yes, I'd like to allow Ms. Mesmer to speak first, and we'll come back to Pierce. She's had three opportunities at this point, so.
Okay, so what we'll do is now we will unmute Ms. Mindy Mesmer. And then we will hear from Cheryl Ann Pierce. Ms. Mesmer, when I unmute you, please start by stating your name, address, and who you represent. And you now have the floor.
Thank you. I'm Mindy Mesmer. I'm an environmental and public health scientist. I am from Rye, New Hampshire, at 291 Washington Road in Rye. I am a member of the House Bill 737 Statutory Commission on the Environmental and Public Health Impacts of Perfluorochemicals in the Air, Soil, and Groundwater in Merrimack, Bedford, and Litchfield. And I write to you today to express my strong opposition to the St. Albayn Performance Plastics Variance Petition requested for an extension of the air permit TP-0256. The technology proposed thermal oxidation with an HF scrubber has been around for decades and has the demonstrated ability to remove 99.99% of fluorochemical compound emissions from the DuPont North Carolina facility. DuPont proposed the use of this technology two years ago, in 2018. St. Albayn initially proposed installing an HF scrubber on their system, but later removed it from their proposal. I'm deeply disturbed that a company who presents itself as a good corporate neighbor, knowing that TO is available and capable of removing fluorochemicals from the air emissions, and that the state of New Hampshire ruled in 2019 that the emissions coming from their stocks exceeded the state's health-based and science-based drinking water standards, is trying to obtain a variance to continue polluting New Hampshire's natural resources. In particular, prior to the implementation of the new enforceable drinking water standards in September of 2019, the state was aware that St. Albayn had contaminated at least 75 square miles of drinking water aquifer in the state of New Hampshire. With the new standards implemented, the impacted area will greatly expand. The standards were challenged in court, and in the interim, the company refused to assess whether additional residents were drinking contaminated drinking water based on the new enforceable standards that have now been written into statute, thanks to the passage of HB 1264. While in 2018, the state had determined there was no significant increase in cancer rates in the Merrimack area when compared with New Hampshire cancer incidence rates. There is increased risk associated with several cancers when the same data are compared with national cancer incidence rates. However, when compared with national incidence rates, the same time periods, the same cancer sites, this increased risk associated with esophageal, colorectal, larynx, mesothelioma, bladder, kidney and renal, brain and central nervous system, thyroid, leukemia, and melanoma rates range from 0.5 to 139% above the national rates. This is in press in a paper that I'm writing right now. Importantly, Merrimack citizens experienced a 27% increased rate of kidney and renal cancers when compared with national averages. And cancers associated with kidney, the kidney are determined to be associated with PFAS exposure based on the findings of the C8 Science Panel work. I respectfully ask that the state deny St. Albayn's request for a variance. We must stop the daily pollution of our water. We already know that they have polluted a large swath of our aquifer. It is unclear what the full extent of their pollution is to the state. However, drinking water is an important natural resource that we must protect to lower the incidence rates of cancer and protect public health. We must err on the side of public health of our New Hampshire citizens, which experience the highest rates of pediatric, bladder, breast, and esophageal cancer in the nation. Respectfully, Mindy Mesmer, co-founder of New Hampshire Safe Water Alliance. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your testimony.
All right, and at this point, we only have Cheryl Ann Pierce lined up to speak. And again, the raised hand and question function are still open. Ms. Pierce, I'm going to unmute you. And please yet again, start by stating your name, address, and who you represent. You now have the floor.
Thank you. Cheryl Ann Pierce, 23 Mayflower Drive, Londonderry, New Hampshire. I represent myself, who have had, interestingly, Ms. Mesmer just called it out. I've had melanoma level four since I lived in Londonderry since 2002. I've had renal cell carcinoma. I only have one kidney left. That makes me even higher risk for COVID, on top of the additional risk that St. Albayn is spewing into the air. But she triggered that because she spoke. I'm sorry. The real question is, I spoke to Kathy specifically about would we be able to see the other emails for the sake of not inputting additional emails that would produce redundancy? And I believe how she responded to me was that, well, it's public information, but we would have to hide everybody's email address. I never heard that we could see those emails. If I'm wrong that we could, I hope someone will tell me. She did tell me that the bulk of the emails had the same sort of thread, which was what we've heard over and over again. Please deny the variance. Please deny the variance. All right, I will go a step further. Please shut them down. A person who works there took his life into his hands to make a phone call to tell us. They tell them, don't talk to the press. Don't tell anybody. Work 24/7. Keep working. Keep making this stuff. We have a massive DoD contract. Keep working. Don't speak to them. If they're outside, just lower your head and keep walking. That's 200 people that are living in fear because they work at St. Albayn. And this mere suggestion that St. Albayn would be able to see our emails. I mean, let's face it, folks, they're, as was said, a huge conglomerate. They're global. They've been around since 1665. They have unlimited resources. They listened to this. They don't need to see our emails. We can't see our emails. Why should they?
Thank you again for your comments. We, again, we will be, this question just came up yesterday, and we'll be consulting with the Attorney General as to whether, what how, what the public ability to see this information is. But it-
I don't, I don't want to see it. I don't want St. Albayn to see it.
I, I understand, but we have to follow the law. We'll be consulting with the Attorney General. There, New Hampshire does have requirements for public information, so. You know.
Bear with me, please. Kathy, did you tell me that those would be visible? And did I really only ask you yesterday?
Cheryl Ann, you had asked me if you'd be able to see other people's comments, as I remember. And I was in the office yesterday trying to figure out how we would be able to facilitate that. We don't have a platform in which to upload 175 emails and be able to distribute that. And so we're trying to figure out a way in which we can be consistent with our right to know requirements and protective of private information and get that information consolidated, and that hasn't happened yet.
Okay, so I'm not the only person who's asked the question, clearly.
No, you, the reason I brought it up yesterday was because of the question you had asked me earlier in the week.
Earlier, but I didn't ask you yesterday.
No, I brought it up here at the office yesterday when I had a chance.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. It appears that we have one more person signed up. A Catherine Hodge. They want to speak again. Yeah, it's, it's not 100% clear. I have a question from Catherine Hodge. So I think we should unmute her, but it may have just been an acknowledgement of prior testimony.
So again, we'll unmute you, Ms. Hodge, but please don't be repetitive. We, we understand your concerns at this point. And if you have new information or a clarifying question, we'll be happy, happy to hear from you.
Okay, Ms. Hodge, I will unmute you again. Each time, we'd like people to state their name, address, and who they represent. It really helps us keep track of the comments during the audio portion of the hearing. You are now unmuted and have the floor.
Hi, Catherine Hodge again, 44 Belmont Drive, Merrimack, New Hampshire. I just want to speak to the last comment about St. Albayn getting the information. We did a peaceful protest, I believe it was in 2018, and we did another one last year. At the first protest that we did, there was a St. Albayn employee that was driving around taking pictures of all of us. They videoed all of us so that they could have our faces. And then a lot of people were scared that they were going to somewhat try and possibly follow us or intimidate us. What other reason would they have to have an employee driving around, videoing us, and taking our pictures? The employee actually ended up parking, and I confronted him, good, bad, indifferent. He tried to cover up his St. Albayn shirt so that I wouldn't see the emblem on it. When I asked him what he was doing, he said that he was taking record of us. I asked for what purpose. He said, I'm not allowed to say. So if we have a fear about our emails being released, there's a pretty good reason why. So in that respect, I know you have to talk to the AG. But I would strongly suggest that you not release our names or anything else because there could be repercussions from St. Albayn. And who's going to be responsible for that if they do per se come after one of the citizens or after some of the citizens? Are you guys going to be responsible for that? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Again, we will consult with the AG and provide information as they deem appropriate under New Hampshire statutes. And, but again, this is a, a public process, the public, this is, this is just the same as if we were in a high school gymnasium in Merrimack. This would be open to the public, and people are viewing it on cable TV. So your comments to us generally are considered to be public information. But again, we want, we will make a determination as to what information, if any, should be, should be shared. Todd, we-
Yep, we have one more person who has indicated they want to speak, Kristen Ayers. Yeah?
All right.
All right, so Ms. Ayers, I'm going to unmute you. And again, please state your name, address, and who you represent. You have the floor.
Excellent. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you so much. I will make this quick. Kristen Ayers, 19 Jakes Lane, Merrimack, New Hampshire. I just wanted to kind of piggyback on the last two comments from people. I think we quite understand. We're giving our name. We're giving our address. So we know that that's of public knowledge. What shouldn't be of public knowledge is people's personal email addresses. Am I to understand that that is what the, the person from Londonderry was concerned with? Because I agree, if that is the case, that St. Albayn should not have access to our personal email addresses.
I think that's our primary concern, and the primary thing we-
Gymnasium, as you just said, I would not be saying my email address to the world. Just that in mind when you speak to the AG.
We, we-
Do not- access to that.
We want to do everything we can within the law to protect confidential information.
I think we should be protected to be able to safely send our testimony without the risk of our email address being shared with this company. Can you guarantee me that my email address will not be shared with them? Because I haven't sent my testimony yet.
I, I cannot at this point. Again, we-
How would I run that out?
We will, you can send that to us as a question. We will be consulting with the Attorney General's office tomorrow about what's, what is considered public information and what we're required to provide.
Is there another way I can send my testimony safely without having them have access to my email address?
Yes, you can send your testimony to us by mail.
Snail mail?
Yes.
Okay. All right, I, I really truly think that you should make that clear. In the state of New Hampshire, we are so careful with our, our, you know, permissions to, you know, we have to state that things are recorded, for example, with our confidentiality. And I think that people may not have shared their testimony via email had they known that, that this company that truly is, I'm not even going to go there, but our, our best interest is not in their mind. They should have zero access to our email addresses. I just want that on record.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Todd?
Okay, at this time, I do not see anyone else who has raised their hand or submitted a question through the GoToWebinar functions indicating that they want to speak.
So let's go ahead and close those then. Close the question and the-
Okay, so we have now turned off those functions.
Okay, good. So, again, I want to thank everyone for taking the time, especially our state representatives and senators and legislators and town officials who've taken time. Again, this, this concludes the testimony portion of tonight's hearing. The hearing was intended to, to hear your testimony. We appreciate you taking the time to participate. I'd like to make a couple of notes before we recess this hearing. And I am not going to be closing the hearing because of a statutory requirement, since we're extending the comment period. The hearing actually has to remain open, so we will be in recess until next Wednesday, August 12th at 4:00 PM. And we will provide public information. We will probably have to reopen this webinar at that time to officially close the hearing. But again, that's a subject that we're discussing with the Attorney General. So, once the public comment period is closed, which again, has been extended until 4:00 PM on Wednesday, August 12th, we have 15 days to review all of the comments and issue a final decision. That's a very short timeframe, especially given all the comments that we've received. All those who registered for tonight's hearing and those who submitted written comments will be provided with a copy of our final decision via email. And it will also be available on the DES website. Again, our, the video and audio of tonight's hearing will be posted hopefully tomorrow. And the slides will also be posted, and the notice of the continuation of the comment period, the extension of the comment period. So with that, I, again, I'm not going to close this hearing. I'm going to recess it until next Wednesday. And we will provide information on our website, the blog site, with regards to what we, what we need to do in order to post the hearing. But you are welcome to send us comments by email or by direct mail up until next Wednesday at 4:00 PM. That concludes the proceedings for this evening. I will now recess this hearing.